Call to order the City Council's meeting for City of East Grand Forks for March 17th, 2020, it's now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassil?
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Reapell?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Does the term call him, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
An open forum, an opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items on the current agenda. Items requiring council action related to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agenda is appropriate. I see nonapproval of minutes, consider approving the minutes a regular meeting for East Grand Forks Minnesota City Council of March 3rd, 2020.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Schedule of bidletings none, schedule of public hearings none. Consent agenda, there is none. Acknowledged or received reports of officers, boards and commissions, regular minutes of Water, Light, Power and Building Commission for February 19th, 2020. Regular meeting minutes of Park and Recreation Commission for December 18th, 2019. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business, consider adopting resolution number 20-303-19, appointing Richard Adet to the four-year term on the planning commission.
Move.
Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Claims, consider authorizing city administrator clerk treasurer issue payments of recommend bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Reapell, second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Move on to other. We have an update from the Polk County Public Health, Public Health Director, Sarah. She just walked in. Thank you for coming.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Sarah Reese. I am the Polk County Public Health Director. And I was asked to come and give a situational awareness briefing, if you will, to let you know what's going on in our world. So, and certainly I can answer any questions that you might have. So, just to back up a bit. The COVID, uh, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Excuse me. The, the COVID situation is sprinting. We're on a mad dash right now, and it's been changing a lot over the last several weeks. So, when COVID first appeared, our response very much mimic that of what we would see with a response to influenza. So, we were really talking about those precautionary measures that everyone could do. Wash our hands, stay home if you're sick, cover your cough, et cetera. So, those precautions are still really important. And what we've had to do is pivot a bit and take another strategy on. And so, that strategy in the public health world is community mitigation strategies. And the reason that we're pivoting that way is because we want to be really intentional to both reduce the number of cases and also to slow down that spread. And the reason that we want to do that is because, for several reasons. One, because we don't, it's a new virus, so we don't have immunity to that virus. There's also not a vaccine or treatment that's readily available. The other reason that we want to do that, which is really important, is because our healthcare systems are or will become very overwhelmed quickly. Most of our healthcare systems are critical access hospitals or affiliated clinics. And they only have so many beds. I've, I've said earlier today, a hospital bed right now is like a gold platter. And so, we only have so many beds, and there's only so many staff to work, to provide personnel for those beds. And so, it's really important that we slow that spread of disease down, and we also spread it out. That's very important. The other thing that people don't often think about that's really on my mind is life is still happening around us. And so, people are still having strokes, people are still having heart attacks, people are still falling and breaking their leg, and they need to be able to access healthcare facilities as well. And so, it's really important that we do all that we can to minimize that potential of spread. And so, the community mitigation strategies have been very intentional. And so, if you were listening on Friday night, Commissioner Malcolm and the Governor announced the community mitigation strategies in a variety of ways. The most common thing being social distancing, really keeping that six feet apart away from one another, which can kind of feel a little bit awkward, and you're all now like going like this. But the, the six feet apart is really important. And then, also to take precautions, protective equipment, use that if it's needed, if you have to respond to something. And so, those community mitigation strategies are really important for those people that are currently well. And it's also important for people who are sick right now with other things. And it's also important for people that are at higher risk. So, right now, the individuals that are, that are considered high risk, the Minnesota Department categorizes those as people who are 70 and older. As a caveat, the President said 65 and older, so you, you pick your number. So, 70 and older is the number I'm currently using. And then, there's three high-risk factors: heart disease, lung disease, and diabetes. Then, there is a variety of other medical, underlying medical conditions that would put you at an increased risk, but you don't fall into that high-risk category. And so, again, we really want to protect, protect people's health and protect that spread of illness. We know from the preliminary data that the spread of disease, so how fast it's spreading, looks like approximately similar to influenza right now, but that's only based on, on baseline data. And as we learn more, that's changing. We call that an R-none value, if you're, if you're a math and science person. And so, we're really watching that rate at which it spreads. And so, when we look at the data, we're, we're looking for cases. There are cases that are really black and white from an epidemiological perspective. So, those would be cases where they've been around someone exposed, or they've been on a ship where there's been an exposure. But unfortunately, in, in Minnesota, we have seen what's called community transmission. So, that means when we go out and do a contact investigation, which is simply an interview, we're talking with the person who's become sick and has that diagnosis, they, they cannot pinpoint who they were around that was sick, or how they got it, which tells us that there's more cases across Minnesota, and hence why our level of concern raises. And so, all the more important that we implemented these community mitigation strategies on Friday. Then, let's fast forward to Sunday, where the Governor rolled out the school closure plan. I want to be really clear that the school closure plan is not related to the public health response in terms of the guidance related to epidemiology. So, the CDC has very concrete guidance about the criteria for recommending school closure based on epidemiological data. That is not where we're at yet. And so, the school closure was related to having a plan in place in case we did see community spread, and we needed to have alternative learning options, because right now, the state as a whole doesn't have that infrastructure to have distance learning for all students across Minnesota. And so, this is an effort to gear up, if you will, and we need all hands on deck. Then, fast forward to, what day are we on? Yesterday. All the days are running together. So, then, fast forward to yesterday, and I'm sure you saw the announcement of the two executive orders related to businesses in other recreational areas. And so, that was the Governor's decision based on a variety of different things as well. And so, there are different mitigation strategies that are being used based on what we're seeing in other states. Our department has been very engaged with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. I'm talking to them frequently. We are learning from what's happening on the East Coast. Well, first, we were learning what's happening on the West Coast. Now, we're really learning from what's happening on the East Coast. And all the more reason that the Governor is being very proactive in his community mitigation strategies, because we really don't want to get to the point that we're taxing our health system in a way that we're not prepared to do that. The public's health and safety is of utmost importance. And all day, every day, no matter how many strategies we talk about, I always go back to, we need to wash our hands, we need to stay home if we're sick, use hand sanitizer, cover our cough. And it's, and it feels like I'm saying it over and over again, but it's super important. It's something that each of us as individuals can do and be part of that solution. Lastly, we are, just to kind of talk about like the what are we doing? So, we are doing a lot of surveillance and monitoring. We're on a lot of calls, making sure people are getting the appropriate information. I, I see ourselves as like, if you think of a bicycle, sort of we're this hub of this wheel, and we're making sure that people are getting the most up-to-date information, and we're also troubleshooting them. This is my situation, this is my situation, this is my business's situation. My grandma lives in East Grand Forks, and I live in Idaho, and this is my situation, and what should she do? We've done a lot of information brokering around what should people do, how should they react? There's a lot of social anxiety, and people respond in lots of different ways when they have those extra social stressors. And so, we're doing coordination with the mental health centers and with primary care providers to have systems in place for that. We're working with law enforcement, with Chief Headland, with emergency managers across the county. And we're also working on our, our own internal plans, because as part of the responsibility, if someone is diagnosed, if someone is a positive case in Polk County, there's that contact investigation that I referred to earlier. And part of that then means they would go into isolation, and potentially others would be quarantined. And so, I just want to quickly define that for you. The media and the public in general uses those two terms a lot, but they mean two very distinct things. So, if someone says to you isolation and quarantine, please ask them what they're actually meaning, because sometimes we use one word but mean another thing. So, isolation, if someone is on isolation, that means that they have, they're sick, they have symptoms, and they've either been diagnosed, or they are, have been tested, and they're waiting on a diagnosis. So, these would be people who are currently sick, and they would be at home on isolation so that we are not spreading the disease to others. Okay? Isolation. So, then contrasting, quarantine would be for individuals who have been around somebody who's been exposed to COVID, somebody who is currently well, but has been exposed to somebody who's been sick. So, those are two different things. You will also hear people who are on quarantine, and some people are like, I'm on quarantine, and I can't leave my house, and I can't go to work, and I can't do X, Y, Z. There's a long list of things. There's other people that will tell you, I'm on quarantine, and I just have to monitor my symptoms for the next 14 days. I have to, you know, am I sick? Am I not feeling well? And so, there's different types of quarantine based on people's risk. And so, that's important to know as well, because different things mean different, different things for different people based, based on their situation. So, from that isolation and quarantine investigation that MDH would be conducting with someone who has a positive case, so someone is then going to go into isolation, they say to that person, so if you were the person with the positive case, and I'm MDH, and I'm coming to interview you, okay? I'm asking you a series of questions. Where have you been with? Who have you been in close contact with? Who have you been in a little bit of contact with? Like, how far can you remember? Have you traveled? Have you had other illnesses? And so, there's a variety of questions that are asked. And then, there are contacts made out to those other people. So, that's how it works. As part of that plan, there's also what's called essential services. So, essential services would be like, I'm in isolation, so I'm sick, but I don't know anyone in the community. I'm not well-connected. I may be new to the community, or I just am not well-connected, and I need help getting food. I need help figuring out how, like, I don't have the internet. How do I figure out food if I'm on isolation? If I can't leave my house, and I don't have food for the next two weeks, how, how am I going to figure that out? Or the next week, or whatever their situation is. And so, essential services is a role that local public health plays in us connecting them if they need access to food, medications, and there's a whole laundry list of things that we're responsible. So, we will be providing that service if that is needed. Of course, we want people to utilize their resources, to have their friends and family help them. So, we're trying to connect people to resources that they have, but ultimately, we're responsible for that if they, if they should need that. And so, we are, you know, we are just learning new things every day. Things are always changing. The cases have been a bit predictable in terms of, from, from the ratio of spreading. We predicted that we'd be seeing more cases now, so that's following the, the curve that we anticipated. People have asked how long this is going to be. I've said, I'm a runner, so I've said this is a marathon. We are on, we're on mile two. We're not on mile like 16 or 23. So, keeping it in perspective, we're doing the best that we can with the resources that we have. I'm exceptionally proud of our, of our collaborations and our partnerships across Polk County, including East Grand Forks, working with the school district, working with law enforcement, emergency management. We've worked with business leaders who have been making plans for the what-ifs. And so, really proud of all of the partnerships. And if I can answer any questions for you now or in the coming days, you can feel free to reach out to me, or call me, email me, or whatever you need, I'm certainly willing to help you or any of your constituents as well.
If an individual has a question, who do they contact? Phone number they can give them?
Yes, they can contact our office, and I can get the phone number to her. It's our Crooks and offices where we're actually feeling all of those calls. We are in instant command right now. So, we do have a communications person that's taking the what-about-me questions, whether it's a business, like, what should I do in my business plan, or I'm worried about, you know, my mother, my kid, my whomever. And so, that number is 281-3385. And I, if you need that, I can repeat that later too as well. Thank you for asking.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Helms?
If there's no cure or whatever for this, if, if, if you've contacted us and have this disease, what do you do? I mean, are you, you just sweat it out, or?
So, if, so 80, so 80% of people that, so if you were diagnosed with COVID, for example, 80% of people are going to have mild symptoms. So, then people say, well, what do you mean by mild symptoms? So, mild symptoms is like worse than a cold, like, you're clearly not going to feel well. You're not going to be wanting to be out and about. Some people have shared that they have also come down with things like pneumonia, also kind of in, in combo with that. So, 80% have what we would call the mild symptoms. You don't feel well. Then, the other 20% are severe cases. They're hospitalized, they need ventilators, they need all of the things we can provide them. There's no vaccine, and there's no treatment, so we're treating the symptoms. We're helping people breathe better. We're helping people calm down. Sometimes people are experiencing nausea and vomiting, so we're giving meds for nausea and vomiting. That would be, that would be things that would happen, that could happen in the hospital. And then, there is that small percentage or growing percentage of people that unfortunately are dying. And that's what we, we don't want to have any deaths. We don't want to have any, we don't want to have any sickness. And so, all the more reason for, for the strategies that we're implementing now. And honestly, I was just talking with the Polk County Emergency Manager, and I said, you know, this weekend, I pulled out my pandemic plan, because it's supposed to be like the Holy Grail of what we go to. And in a pandemic plan, you're trying to get a medication to people as quickly as you can. I'm like, I pretty much need to throw that pandemic plan in the trash and, and start over, because it is a very different thing right now where we're trying to keep people away from one another. That's a very different philosophy. And people often will say like, I don't, I don't mind not being by people. That's fine. But when you're not by people for 14 days, that's a long time to not be in any social situation. And so, that, it, it is a big challenge, but we have great teamwork and we're getting after it together. So.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming and all the work that you are doing and going to do, I'm sure.
You're welcome.
If someone suspects themselves or a family member to be at risk, I guess, or of having the, the virus, do you suggest going to a healthcare facility, calling ahead, or having someone come out? Or I don't know what, what the process is.
Yes, thank you for asking. So, interestingly enough, that's the reason I was a few minutes late, is the guidelines is like literally changing as we speak, and so, I was, I was being updated on that. So, what we really want people to do is if they're not feeling well, to call their primary care provider, to call before they go in. The criteria for testing is being limited, and it's being limited for a variety of reasons. One, because there's only so many test kits available right now. And so, they just literally this afternoon are narrowing that criteria for high-priority cases to be tested. And so, those recommendations are constantly changing. But what I would say is if people are sick and have, you know, the fever, nausea, vomiting, coughing, et cetera, those symptoms, the acute respiratory illness symptoms, for them to call their medical provider. Each health system has got a few different nuances, so I don't want to speak to the specifics of anyone, but that would be what I'd recommend. The other thing relative to like my, people's individual situation of where to go for information, or if people are like, do I, do I fit this category? Is this me? Where can I get more information? I really want to make it clear that people need to go to reputable sources, because I've gotten several calls where they've gone to national TV networks and gotten all their information from, from there, and unfortunately, that's not a reality in Minnesota. And so, I really want to point people, yourselves included, to utilize the Minnesota Department of Health or the Center for Disease Control and Prevention websites. And I will also say, if you, as a businessperson or whatever your background is, if you looked at a resource last week, you should go find that resource again, because the guidance is changing ever so quickly, and it's also changing in its location. So, as an example, I had someone call me yesterday, and they said, I was in this resource guide, this interim guidance, and I put it in my favorites, and now it's not there. Where did it go? And so, there's, the plethora of information is a little bit overwhelming to people. And so, if people are looking for a guidance document, feel free to call us instead of spending hours looking for it, because it's public health terminology that's being used, and it's not necessarily written in plain language. And so, if people do have questions finding a document that may help their business do planning, or their whatever, we can certainly troubleshoot that with them.
Thank you. Do we also, you know, we talk about hand washing and distance and not touching your face and things, which suggest a contact transmission. Do we also have any evidence whether there's an airborne transmission factor or not?
So, when, so when it first rolled out, it was airborne precautions, which is very precise. And as of Friday at 10:00 AM, specifically at 10:00 AM, the guidelines changed to droplet precautions, which are still significant but much different. Droplet would be very different than an airborne precaution. So, yes, they did change on Friday. Could they change again? Certainly. But as of Friday at 10 o'clock, droplet precautions. Now, if people still choose to use airborne precautions, that's their choice. What I will say about that is if you're implementing airborne precautions but don't have a necessary reason to do that, we also only have a limited amount of PPE, that personal protective equipment. And so, there are also guidance doc, guidance documents out there right now that are saying, we need to stretch out our N95 masks. We need to stretch out our surgical masks, because we, they're, they're not just like falling out of the sky, and they're not readily available. And the ones that are readily available are very, very expensive. And so, that's really important to use it when we need it for its intended purpose of having it on someone that's sick.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
I know one of the reasons to call in is if you walked up to the receptionist and began to speak and tested positive, that receptionist might have to be quarantined. Now, if you walk into the reception area to a room full of people at close proximity, they may have to be quarantined. So, by calling ahead, the healthcare provider would be dressed in appropriate attire, would probably meet you and take you straight to the, the place where they intend to do the testing. So, the goal is to, again, minimize the exposure even inside that facility.
Correct.
They're going to have to mop up every, every single inch of where you were and disinfect. And, and the, the number of people exposed to it should be at zero, and the healthcare provider should be protected with the proper gear.
Correct. Yes, thank you. The other thing that I will mention, because it was mentioned yesterday, and I had another city reach out and ask me about it, and that is related to public buildings. So, the guidance that was given last night was that the Minnesota Department of Health recommends that public buildings remain, remain open as long as they can maintain social distancing of at least six feet between people. And that's the guidance. You can do what you wish, but that is the guidance that was given. So, not everybody has seen all of those, those pieces of guidance. So, just wanted to clarify if that's going to be part of your conversation for the city today or in the coming days.
Reapell?
What Altrus is recommending is that you call your healthcare provider, talk to them. They'll walk you through your steps that they want you to take. I believe they do have a drive-through at the hospital, at the emergency room. But you should call first.
Absolutely.
And have them tell you what you should do.
Correct. We call that curbside screening or testing, and so, that's excellent advice. Call first. They'll direct you where to go if a review's your provider or Sanford or wherever, just to check in with them. And they will, they will direct people where to go. And we've had individuals that don't have a healthcare home, if you will, they don't have an identified doctor or medical provider, and so, we've helped navigate, like, where's the closest medical provider to you that could help you in that, in that need?
Anybody else have anything? I do appreciate you coming in and kind of going through all this.
You're welcome.
Good information to have, and people that are watching online can appreciate that too, so.
You're welcome. And if anyone has follow-up questions later or things I could ask to you, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to mayoral declaration of local public health emergency.
Yes. Yesterday, we had a meeting with our emergency manager, Jeff Bushy, also there, Mark Olstead, Carla Anderson, Paul Gordy, and Warren Strandell from the county, along with myself. And as we were talking about some of the preparations that have already taken place and some preparations that need to still take place, we looked around the table and asked honestly, does anyone at this table right now actually have the authority, under our current city charter, under our current form of governance, to make these decisions without a full council action? And the decision was that under the current circumstances, without any sort of declaration, we don't. So, we'd have to meet as a council daily or hourly, because staff are meeting with department heads. Emergency management is meeting at the county level. It's happening all over the place continuously. This is a very dynamic situation. And so, the thought was to, to have some sort of declaration that would take away some of those restrictions under this unique circumstance, and let some of those decisions happen in a, in a somewhat unconventional way, again, because of the emergency. We got the recommendation from our emergency manager not to try to make a formal disaster declaration here, because we want to work very closely with the county on that, and so, this is not that. Mr. Gallstead went to work and found some guidance for us as a mayoral declaration of local public health emergency. And, Mr. President, if it's necessary, I will read through this right now for the record. Is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes.
All right. So, I'm holding now a mayoral declaration of local public health emergency. Whereas, the City of East Grand Forks, Minnesota, has a current local public health emergency resulting from imminent health conditions caused by the presence and increased number of cases of coronavirus disease, COVID-19, in the state of Minnesota. And whereas, the City of East Grand Forks is a public entity within the state of Minnesota. And whereas, the Center for Disease Control identifies the potential public health threat posed by COVID-19, and has advised that person-to-person spread of COVID-19 will continue to occur. And whereas, the state of Minnesota has confirmed multiple positive test results for COVID-19. And whereas the state of Minnesota has confirmed multiple positive test results for COVID-19. And whereas the United States and the state of Minnesota have both declared states of emergencies related to urgent conditions created by the presence of COVID-19. And whereas the necessary resources to respond and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic may exceed the resources available in the city of East Grand Forks. And whereas the following conditions exist in the city of East Grand Forks as a result of this local public health emergency. One, COVID-19 is present in the state of Minnesota, and the number of cases has continued to spread throughout the state. Two, significant community spread of COVID-19 is now a very high risk, based on data from the Minnesota Department of Health and confirmed by the Department of Health and federal health authorities. This risk has resulted in specific recommendations from the Minnesota Department of Health regarding sizes and formats of public gatherings. Three, the presence of COVID-19 may have the potential to compromise the provision of essential city services, including a reduction in the size of the workforce due to school closures, isolation, or quarantine. Now therefore, I, Stephen Gander, mayor of the city of East Grand Forks, to hereby declare a local emergency pursuant to the Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12.29, and East Grand Forks City Code ordinances, Section 34-05, and the city charter, -3.15. I further declare that, one, the emergency exists on the date of this declaration, as indicated below, and shall continue and remain in effect as long as the state of Minnesota peacetime emergency declaration remains in effect pending initial ratification by official act of the East Grand Forks City Council within 72 hours of this declaration. Pursuant to City Code Section 34-05A, the city council retains the ability to disapprove of the declaration at any time following initial ratification. Two, the director of emergency management for the city of East Grand Forks shall request and coordinate the appropriate aid and resources from surrounding city and county jurisdictions, the state of Minnesota, and the United States federal government. Three, the Section 3.15 emergency bids of the East Grand Forks City Code shall take effect dispensing with competitive bids. Competitive bidding shall not be required due to the emergency. It is essential to the health, safety, and welfare of the people of East Grand Forks that immediate action be taken, and there is insufficient time for competitive bids. Four, the emergency executive authority section of the East Grand Forks Emergency Operations Plan and all other applicable sections of the plan is immediately invoked. Five, emergency regulations promulgated by mayoral proclamation to protect the public health, safety, and welfare during this emergency as authorized by the City Code Section 34-06C are subject to rescission by the city council at any time. If not sooner rescinded, every such regulation shall expire at the end of 30 days after its effective date or at the end of the declared emergency, whichever occurs first. Six, a policy group is hereby convened to coordinate, support, advise, and assist in the communication of and discharge of the duties and responsibilities pertaining to this declared state of emergency and the city's response and mitigation efforts. The policy group shall consist of the mayor, the president, and vice president of the city council, the city administrator, city clerk, the city emergency management director, and additional selected department heads. All city departments, this is number seven, all city departments shall review all existing city of East Grand Forks regulations, policies, or rules, and be prepared to recommend the alteration, modification, or temporary suspension of same for the purpose of aiding the residents, workforce, and visitors present in East Grand Forks during the pandemic. Eight, all city departments shall evaluate and recommend resources that can be acquired and deployed for the purpose of aiding the residents, workforce, and visitors present in East Grand Forks during the pandemic. Nine, this declaration of local emergency, all emergency regulations of any kind, any additions or changes to this declaration, and the eventual termination of this declaration, and all official communications pertaining to same shall be posted by the city clerk on the front page of the city's website. Ten, the mayor's office and relevant city staff and department heads will provide public updates on COVID-19-related work at city council meetings. And if approved, I will sign that, and it will be attested. Thank you.
Really, it does need to be approved, but we're going to approve it the last 30 days. So that's what the next thing is.
And if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you would sign this as your declaration. Then we're going to have the council within that 72-hour period, hopefully by three-quarter boat, approve that tonight. The other thing is, is that if this takes longer than the 30 days, we would have to reinstate it. The reason for the 30 days or the end, whichever comes first, is statutory and is a part of our ordinance. And so it's a limited duration of 30 days. If it continued to be necessary, we would have to go ahead and ratify it and extend it by other action of the council. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we'll move on to number eight, and the Consider adopting resolution number 20-03-20, ratifying the mayoral declaration of a local public health emergency.
Move.
Who by Johnson, second by Riappel. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only question I have is that in the declaration, it requires information be put out at public meetings. What happens because of something we don't have? We suspend public meetings? Or is there another channel for, or an additional channel that information, obviously, it's going to go through the vice president and president. Is there additional channels so that council can be made aware of any changes, updates?
It'll show up on the front of the website, right? All these will be posted by our city clerk to the front page of the website as they happen? Any other posting that would be needed, by all means, I'm receptive to it.
We'll make sure it gets seen.
And for the purposes of that, a public meeting doesn't have to be a live public meeting. It could be an ITV meeting, if we ended up setting them up that way. It could be where we don't have the public, even here, we just have ITV, and we just announce it on those ramifications. The other thing that can be done, obviously, is you're all in an email chain. If there's any necessary contact, you could contact through this authority each other without violating the public meeting law.
That would be?
It would be fine, so that you can communicate the need for the emergency.
But only in this narrow scope.
Then we would, yeah, under the narrow scope of this emergency. And then we would post those, that information on the website so that everybody could have it, if it wasn't the ability to do it in a live meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Not for all couples.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olstead?
Yes.
Grassel?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mr. Gander.
It's kind of hard to get reoriented to the rest of life when we're under this COVID threat. We know we have a flood coming, and we know our emergency manager and all of our public works, and everybody will be fixated on that. Please rest assured, they're meeting also on these things regularly and watching any changing projection of the crest and all the preparation that we're going to need. They may be dealing with some depleted staff numbers with people being gone for school absences, but we will do what's necessary. We'll have the sandbags, very few of them that we park, and they're palletized here and there along our flood system in case of anything that should happen. And we'll also be ready to set flood wall planks as needed, you know, through our normal progression as we go. And I just want to thank everybody involved with that, who already has their heads around it, coordinating the county, coordinating with Grand Forks, for that. I know you mentioned that the meeting that was going to be a flood meeting kind of got commandeered to COVID-19, which is probably appropriate under the circumstances that we are. I want to also say, Mr. Hooton and I, and all of us, and you all can jump in on it too, Mr. Demers, Mr. Olstead, we made a trip to St. Paul last week to talk about our arena baseball recreation program, and also just to lobby about eight different representatives down there and senators on various issues of concern to East Grand Forks and to outstate Minnesota in general and across the whole state. We did, we had the opportunity to testify at a House Subcommittee about the sales tax, and I think that went very well. I think it was well received. We were coached pretty well to what they would be looking for and anticipated some of their questions even before the questions were asked. So we owe a lot to our staff that are down on the ground down there that we have a contract with to help guide us through that process. And anyone else who probably want to weigh in on that? It turns out, we thought we might be going back this week to testify before a Senate committee for tax, but that meeting has been canceled. The whole focus now has shifted to the COVID situation. And once again, that's really appropriate, and so it does not appear that we'll be headed back. And who knows, if this thing can blow over kind of quickly, and the legislature and the governor can return to normal work, our tax bill might still have a chance for this year. But if this really dominates the whole session, none of these bills may be heard at all this year. So we'll have to just wait and see probably the severity of this condition along with the priorities given at the level of the legislature and the governor. So one last thing I wanted to share, you all heard a little preview of it. It crossed my mind. You know, so much of what's happening, and we still have our county health personnel out in the wings out there, so much of what's happening seems a little extreme, a little bit reactionary, and I just want to speak to that. You know, we've seen fires burn up hundreds of thousands of acres before those fires can be stopped. In many mature forests, the floor is made up of a thick floor of organic material that's combustible. So as the fire sweeps across, you not only have the foliage and all the plants burning, but the whole forest floor starts up with it, and it just marches straight across. Well, if you hike in some forest, you'll come upon an area where there's a wide strip cut clear, no trees, and they've picked up all that forest floor of organic material for quite a few feet and for several miles in length. These are fire breaks, and these fire breaks stop the spread of forest fires spreading through the forest. They create a limit to how far the fire can burn. So forest fires are inevitable, but these fire breaks allow the firefighters to focus their efforts on a more focal area, and they really minimize the damage to the forest. So the time to create a fire break such as that is before the fire starts. You'd be strategic, you'd be planning it, and you have a really intentional effort to build these fire breaks, because once the fire's burning, the heat, the smoke, the unpredictability, the shifting winds make it virtually impossible to try to build these fire breaks. So you've got to have them in place before the forest fire breaks out. So these coronavirus safety measures that we're taking are like building the fire breaks inside of our society, inside of our civilization. They will limit the spread to a smaller area. They will allow us to focus our medical, financial, and other services to that smaller area, and they will save many, many lives in the process. And the time to create these fire breaks is now, before this pandemic has swept all the way through. And so it may seem a little extreme. It may seem like an overreaction. If you ask my 93-year-old mom, she'll say she's being held hostage against her will at the Good Samaritan right now. But I think down deep, she knows it's for her good, and I know it is for good. Again, thousands of lives will be saved across our country, and most of them will be in that 70, 80 years and on. So as much as possible, let's all work together to learn these measures, to employ these measures, and let's support those who treat and care for those who have the disease, and let's also support those businesses that are affected. Some of them have lost some of their livelihood, but they're going to have alternative ways to provide services. Let's utilize those, and so to really minimize the effect on the businesses, on the families, on everybody involved. Thanks.
Mr. Better?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Riappel?
I'd just like to make sure everybody keeps our healthcare workers, our fire department, our police officers. They're the first ones online for this type of thing. And keep them in your thoughts, because a lot of them are putting in a lot of extra hours for us. That's it.
Johnson?
Just wash your hands.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Grassel?
Just for those people that are out there listening to you, also, you can get information off the school website. And I know that, I think they made connections with Megan today on food pickup all over the city. I know it's on websites all over, but those buses are going to roll tomorrow at 11 o'clock. So they'll be all over town delivering meals for kids. And I know that there's restaurants that have stepped up and did the same, and we're thankful for that. I know at the school, we're doing everything possible to get through what we need to do with childcare and all of those things. And I believe as of when I left the school at 4:35, we had a hundred and, a little over 100 and some kids signed up for the daycare that is provided to essential personnel and that as well. So we're ready to go outside, too.
Anything else, sir?
I'd also like to thank all the healthcare workers and all the personnel who've stepped up, doing what we can, the staff of the city, making sure that we're doing the proper things, then City Hall and other facilities, making sure we're following the guidelines that were set for, to us. So as long as we keep the communication going and communication on our website and getting the most updated information out there, that's going to be good for our citizens, and hopefully, we can weather through this, so. Mr. Gallstead, do you have anything?
The only thing that I wanted to share also is it can be a little alarming that we just did this local public health emergency. I just confirmed with Sarah when I walked out that as of last count, there has not been any confirmed cases here in the city. So anybody that's listening will understand that, you know, knock on one, we don't have any yet, and hopefully, we can keep it that way.
Mr. Emery?
Nothing.
Anything from the department heads? Yes, Nancy?
Just a couple of announcements. One is that the city does own a senior living and disabled facility, apartment facility. And while we do not have the ability, like you would in a nursing care, nursing home, assisted facility, those types of things, to put them on lockdown, we have notified the residents that we closed their community room to limit those gathering under 10. We have also asked that they keep visitors to a minimum, primarily delivery of groceries and our medical items, as well as any sort of medical appointments. Second thing to be aware of is that the transit is still in operation. We are separating those that are riding the buses as much as possible, and we are limiting our senior rider and dialer ride at this point to a single customer per vehicle. So we give them their ride, we clean the vehicle, et cetera. It has dropped our rides considerably, so we are asking that the senior rider, you know, type dialer ride rides be kept to those that are absolutely necessary, doctor's appointments, purchasing food, getting prescription, those types of things. So, but we're going to continue to run, because these people do need to get their necessities as well, and we're going to continue to try to provide that to them as necessary. The third thing is, and just a reminder, that we are prepared here at City Hall. Right now, we're, you know, to take online billing payments. I know today and the last couple of days, we've had a number of residents that think they need to come in and pay their bills. So we're asking, please, if you can, the majority of this stuff is online. We do have drop-off box. We do have ability to receive phone calls, do things online, over the phone, provide all of that that's necessary. So, you know, we're asking at this point in time that people truly consider doing things remotely rather than coming into the middle thing just to do things such as pay your bill and/or see what's going on, so.
So Nancy, a question I do have, at some time, are we going to lock the doors of City Hall?
I don't want to be the person that would do that. I do know as of 5:00 today, Grand Forks has locked their City Hall. And they are only allowing essential personnel and employees based on needs, things like that, at this point in time into the building. So the building is locked. We have been, Carla and I have been working at length with our IT department. For those that maybe could work from home, we're not at the point yet where we're looking at a work-from-home scenario. I do know that a number of people who work with central personnel, healthcare services, those types of things, they've actually asked their spouses and/or members to work from home because of the extensive exposure they may or may not receive in the future. And we don't want to have a husband and wife have to live apart from each other some- And we don't want to have a husband and wife have to live apart from each other or something like that because one works at City Hall and one is going in and out of their job. So we are definitely working with our employees right now. If I could so choose, I would love to lock up the building tomorrow and leave it just to employees and work from that point. But again, I would expect that, you know, you would have some sort of delivery. I am in contact with the Public Information Office over in Grand Forks. They are more than willing to help with any sort of announcements, notices, running things on their television channel. They are also looking at ways to do virtual city council meetings. So, and they have offered to work with Cory and our IDT department or anyone else in the city if we need those types of services, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jemers, do you have something?
Thank you, but I didn't know if Jeff was coming up or... Go ahead, you might bring up what I was going to talk about.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, Council, my name is Jeff Bushy. I'm the interim fire chief and emergency manager for East Grand Forks. First of all, my thoughts and prayers go out to all of our citizens and our nation, for this is a really difficult time for everybody. I want you to know, as interim fire chief and emergency manager, I'd like to assure you that life safety is my number-one objective in this position. And that concern goes for our citizens and my staff. To accomplish this, the fire department has made some changes. Just to give you a little bit of up-to-date on that, the way we respond to emergency medicals, we have changed that. We've written a standard operating guideline for our guys to follow, and the purpose of that is to reduce the spread of this disease. We've also suspended fire safety inspections and also any public education events that we have scheduled. So that's our piece from the fire department. From emergency management side, we're in unity with the governor, what he's doing. So we are encouraging and implementing guidance from him. We're encouraging and implementing guidance from Ulrich Health System, from Polk County Public Health, and from the Minnesota Department of Health and the CDC. As Sarah mentioned, we have to be careful on where we get our information from, and those are the entities that we have chosen to go along with in this process. This is a very dynamic situation. Sarah did a very good job of talking about that, so it's moving constantly. We are working very hard to try and keep up with this and implement the necessary steps to go along with this. Got a very good staff in East Grand Forks. I'm new to this, and the staff that I'm working with, people I'm working with, are doing an excellent job. So I give a lot of credit to them, to our people. Keep in mind, our biggest concern is the safety of our citizens and our staff. Thank you. Any questions for, from Council?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say that I only had a quick chance to skim the email that was put out, you know, with your couple of documents or whatever, and I would just say, you know, the level of detail and organization made it very nice for even just a person that skims it to get a lot of information and very clear, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Set a high bar for yourself or whoever. The question I have is, I think in that recommendation, there was, you know, it talked about something, you know, talked about with Nancy is closing City Halls, closing public buildings, but it talked about boards, commissions, meeting. Is there a specific recommendation? Are we leaving it up to all the boards and commissions? I'm speaking, I'm looking at Keith, we have a meeting tomorrow, 8:00, Water and Light, are we anticipating, we've already kind of talked about telecom, but I don't know if, is that the recommendation is to shut all boards and commissions down or?
Well, first of all, to answer your question with the meetings, we had a meeting Monday that was supposed to be flood, like we talked about earlier, but we included the COVID stuff with it. After that meeting, I was reflecting on it and thought, you know what, we need to separate these two items. So I'm going to suggest on that front that we keep our flood meetings separate from our COVID meetings. Our next flood meeting is scheduled already, and I'm kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for Mr. Murphy to get available and visit with him on how we want to approach the COVID thing. And in my mind, I'm thinking establishing a different group to take care of a lot of that stuff.
I thought about that.
Does that answer your question?
Well, you had mentioned that, and I was thinking the same thing, is sometimes the people don't necessarily need to make it tougher on the mayor, because it doesn't have to be a couple of meetings, but that's what we do. No, I just mean like commission, boards and commissions, Water and Light's planning a meeting tomorrow, I don't know if Keith, you want to speak to it, but, you know, we've got planning zoning, we've got all these other boards and commissions, are we anticipating having these commissions and boards?
Well, I'm Keith Nichols, that's general manager of East Grand Forks, Water and Light for the people that are listening. We're in sync with, we've been talking with Carla and Nancy and kind of talking daily. We've been getting information from the MMUA and other entities, and they've been kind of recommending what we should do. And so I've been in contact with our staff, our department heads regularly. As far as the meeting tomorrow, we've sent out some information. I've asked Cory to kind of check into it, maybe we could have some of the people just listen in. We've talked about spacing when the commission comes in. I've provided options for the commissioners to even stay home, a couple of them if they would like. That's kind of where we went with that. I'm assuming that we'll adopt, since it's a Water and Light commission, we'll definitely bring it to the commission for adopting the declaration, and, you know, I think we're prepared or ready to kind of fall in sync with the other department heads and what the city and the city council advises, so.
I just think, I mean, some commissions might not have business that they have to do to pay, you know, Water and Light.
We have to meet every couple of weeks to approve bills, et cetera, but we could shrink that down and just do that type of business and nothing else for the next few meetings. It's, I guess it's, tomorrow we'll have that discussion, and we'll listen to what you as a council recommend.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Anything else from the department heads?
Thank you, just a couple of updates. I know Charlotte has been in contact with the Minnesota Library Association, and some of their suggestion is talking about closing. She has not made a decision, she's waiting for that to come from this group or with that proclamation, wherever that may be. But just to keep you updated on that, some of them have already closed, and that is because of the staff shortage. Some people have already been sick, influenza has been rampant, we've had even people sick in our own library. And they are, you know, the libraries are aware that they are a public building, they are a catch-out when school's out, and there's many students that come and use Chromebooks there, and so it's not something we really want to do because we, you know, we're working with the schools on providing that service for them. But that would be something, probably in short term, I, we don't know where the schools are at, at their online programming, so we will work with the schools on making that work. The other thing is that we were looking for some guidance today. Jeff and I were told that the governor was going to have a press conference at 5:30 today, which I don't think anybody's found it online, so I don't know if it happened or not happened, but that's what we were told this morning, so we were actually hoping we'd get some direction on that, on the building and such like that. The other update is that, as you're aware, David has been out of town, he is planning on coming back today, tonight. He is putting himself on self-quarantine since California is one of the areas that I think it came out somewhere that that's one of the areas that they suggest people to self-quarantine themselves, so he is doing that. We are setting up with a laptop with him, so he will be working at home, he will be available by email, by phone, he'll just, his office will be at home for, I don't know, we haven't, nobody knows how long, if it's 14 days or less, but just so everybody's aware of that, he will be in tonight. He said his plane comes in at 6:30 tonight in Fargo, so he will be available. Any other questions that I can help you with?
What's the process for making that decision on the library? I've been thinking about that in my head, too, with, I've got kids at home, I'm thinking, how are they going to get all the books they need to read?
Mr. Goss?
I think your process was just set by the mayor and the emergency proclamation, and I believe that that group of people can make a decision, and if the council doesn't want to have it, then they could rescind it. But at this point, you've left it up to the group in your proclamation.
And I, for one, value the opinion of every one of you as policymakers, and certainly all of our department heads and city staff for guidance and input. And when the question came out, what's Charlotte going to do with the library, and what is her plan, what are her intentions, right away, we all came to realize, for example, Charlotte is connected through a variety of associations to some really credible resources, national, state, that helped to guide this whole process, and kind of best practices going on across the whole nation, across the state, and she's really well-connected. She's been in this post long enough to have these connections. So I would, we would, I think, listen to her input, what is she hearing from her experts, and then locally make our decision with the best information that we have. And again, anybody who wants to weigh in on it, we can seek that. But I do agree that there'll be many of these decisions to make about the library, about, you know, one tier of closure of City Hall would be that only necessary staff come in, or maybe a variety of staff come in, but that is closed to the public, that would be one level of closure. Another level of closure would be to say, it would be those same staff, but public would be in by appointment only for scheduled meetings, which would open it up to boards and commissions and other individual meetings that we might want to have, so that would be another level of closure. And so, yeah, these are things to consider.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you saw it or not, if you had time, I'm sure you're busy, Charlotte did send us an email about 3:00 today regarding, you know, the national connections about, they're encouraging that the libraries be closed. I know Grand Forks did close theirs already, too, but just so you know, everybody knows that, that's what she has sent to us about 3:00 today.
And they haven't implemented a lot of already, they're not allowing everybody to use the rooms. They're not doing the tutoring like they did. One of those reasons is the UND students are the tutors, so they're not allowing people to be in the separate rooms because of the distancing with the two people. They've gone through and sanitized all their toys, they're not bringing them back out, they're not having any outreach programs, and they're not having any activities within the library. The AARP and the tax preparation, the National AARP said no more. So we've been lucky because some of these other groups have canceled for us, so those tough decisions, sometimes we didn't have to make them ourselves. You know, I know we're all, I feel bad for all the figure skaters, they didn't get to have their show, but the National Figure Skating Association made the decision, it was not made by us. The governor made the decision on other things, so I guess today we were almost thinking the governor would give us some guidance on the libraries and other government buildings. So I guess we're, you know, just keep us informed about, you know, what you want us to do. We've gone, I've looked to get Chromebooks for staff that we anticipate that would be working remotely, so that they have the tools to do their job remotely.
Mayor?
If I could just get the general opinion of council, because there will be that small group that will come out of this and be tasked with some of these decisions, are you generally on board with, say, for example, closing the library? I throw that out, is there some agreement that that's for public safety, probably the direction to head?
I agree, close it.
I think.
And the next step of closing City Hall to the public? I know it's been done already, set up in Grand Forks. Yes?
I don't think a hard lockdown is necessary, but I think you could do some staged lock, you know, something.
Stage it in.
And that's my opinion, I don't, I think we are, it's a different then of business, I think we are an essential thing.
Yeah.
And I think we, if you lock it, it's hard to open it up, and like, say you want to do something, I don't know what that thing would be, it's some sort of public information, something, the second you lock it, it's hard to open that back up and tell people to come back in or whatever. So I think that, in my opinion, closing City Hall is kind of a, for a hard lockdown, I think would be a last resort, but I think you can limit access or...
We're not prepared to do a closure of City Hall to employees.
Right on. Right on, we don't have the technology for that.
You know, the thing that makes me nervous is today, the majority of the people that came in to pay their bills were 70 and older.
Right on.
And they're the ones that if we close, they're going to continue to come because they feel like they need to drop off their bill. And while I don't want to say I don't want them here, that I don't want them to feel uncomfortable, we will gladly help them. But, you know, I'm more concerned for the people coming in than we as staff at this point. We have definitely, you know, the social distancing, a majority of us work in separate offices. We're not prepared to go, you know, at this point, you know, to work off, you know, off-site.
Right.
So, you know, I would, I would think, you know, if we close to the public at, you know, by noon, or, you know, give them time to understand that, you know, prepare them for what's, you know, available to them, not within the building, I would suggest that.
And so this was kind of a straw poll, I think that small group will take it up. You will be part of that, Mr. Bush, you will be part of that. I mean, everybody, everybody in this room will be part of that, and we'll all be on board, but I think we're heading in the direction of, for sure, a limited closure, where it would be maybe someone scheduled to come in, where you might allow a board or a commission to meet, or a scheduled visit from a citizen that you knew was here for one hour and out again. So there may be some of that still allowed, or it may be staff only. It'll probably end up one of those two kinds of closure, and then all alternate ways for public service. I mean, we're here to serve our people, whether it's the bill pay, whether it's whatever kind of service they might need, we'll find a way to do it outside of these walls.
Now, I got one other thing to add, and last week...
Keith, please. Otherwise, people don't hear, sorry. Cory always says that.
At the end of last week, we already put out notification on the website for Water and Light, et cetera, and I'm sure the city did the same thing as well for the other departments. So people are already, they've already been told that we have these other options for coming in and making payments, so.
Thanks, Keith.
Right. Mr. Gordy, I know you have something, sir.
We're also coordinating with other agencies and organizations on the types of financial resources that might be needed for individuals and/or businesses, so we can, that information we'll be posting as well. We've already posted some of it. And at today's EDA meeting, the Economic Development Authority meeting, we talked about ways to use our city resources, but I will be coordinating with Ron, so, because there's some legal paperwork that has to be done with that as well. So Ron and I will be working on that to make the resources that the city has through its loan programs available, particularly to businesses.
Appreciate it, sir.
Mr. Gordy, thank you so much for that. Mayor Brown and I gave a joint release of information, and it's our hope on both sides of the river that our economic development departments, EDC, EDA, will be a clearinghouse for everything available from the Fed, from the state, anything maybe from the county, and even some local funds that we can administer to our businesses, to our people, you know, so that paychecks keep coming in and businesses are still standing strong even after this thing passes. So thank you for your involvement with that.
Anything else?
I'd just remind people that not everybody uses the internet, so, you know, we need to use our partners, you know, in the media as much as possible. Some people listen to the radio, some people don't listen to anybody, you know, so, and those are the people that are most likely to walk in, I would imagine, and want to pay our bills, so, you know, just be, everybody's aware of that, obviously, but we need to make sure that not everything we do is digital, because you're going to miss a big portion of people.
And call us.
Yeah.
Call us. I mean, that's one of the reasons when Nancy was talking about the importance of having employees around. If we're there, we can answer the phones, it's harder to do remotely, there's only so many lines that can be available, but that's something that where we can answer calls as well. that's something that where we can answer calls as well.
Anything else?
Just one more thing. I know we talked about, like Nancy was talking about the older, younger gentleman that came in and paid, and we do have a dropbox. This is payable for actually watching. If you don't have an envelope, Nancy, like Nancy said, just grab an old envelope at home, put your name on it and your address, and we can make the payment. So if the door is locked, you know, there is a dropbox right out in our parking lot here, and, you know, that's good, I mean, we'll take cash, we just would like to have it in an envelope, and a name on it, so we know whose it is. But, you know, those resources are there, you don't have to come in the building, you can call, we can take credit cards over the phone, you can do it online. So there are options, and, you know, somebody can call and say, I want to come pay my bill, even if we're, you know, locked, and, you know, we'll meet you at the door.
Right.
Or something. So we are willing to work with those that don't have their services, don't have internet, don't use them, and there's a lot of them, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Might need the chief to do a couple of extra patrols over there now that you just said there might be cash in the box.
Well, and we can, you know, we can go check it more often, so.
We're not going to shut anybody off, are we?
But I just want to make sure everybody knows there is a dropbox in the parking lot.
Right.
Anything else?
Checking money orders preferred.
Now, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
By Reapel.
Backing.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjournment.